Good evening, everyone here. Thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate you for coming up to our workshop September the 2nd, 2025 at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, recall the roll, please.
Commissioner Polk.
President.
Vice Mayor McCalvin.
President.
President, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thanks to the Commissioners, and thank to staff, and thank you to residents for being here tonight. Madam Attorney, thank you for being here as well. And the young people from the pre-law program, thank you for being here alone with your parents tonight. We really do appreciate you being present. Residents, thank you. Staff members, thank you for being here as well. We will continue with our agenda for the night, discussion of fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Present time, City Manager Calma and our Finance Director, Mr. Massey.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. This is your final budget workshop before you make consideration on tomorrow night at 6:00 PM for the adoption of your tentative budget. We've had, we've held several public meetings regarding the budget workshop. You have given opportunity, has been had opportunity for the Commission to provide input on that. We've made some adjustments. If there's any additional feedback from this Commission that you would like to have, and open it for any public comments, I'm not sure. But if, we're here now to discuss our final, well, excuse me, not final, the last budget workshop of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. So if there's any conversation from any Commissioner, from this Commission as a whole, we opening the door for that conversation, Mayor.
As you said, Madam, Commissioner Polk.
Not right now, sir.
All right. Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Just one thing, or actually two things. If we can look at our Legislative 101 portion. I would like to see the Commissioners go from $10,900 to a flat rate of $12,000. On page, Legislative Page 6.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, may I?
Go ahead. City Manager Calma.
Is that paid grade for 10/1 2025 across the board?
Yes, sir.
In addition to discussion, on this Commission.
Also from the Special Projects, can we take a look at that?
Page, Vice Mayor.
Page 8 of the Legislative?
Yes.
Commissioner of Projects, yes, sir.
Is there a way we can add a little more to our Special Project? Due to the fact that we have a lot of events and partnerships, I just think that we could be able to, if possible, in the budget, we can add an increase to our Special Project balance.
The, give me a number, Vice Mayor, would you please, sir?
Additional, I would suggest, I want to kill the budget, like an additional $500.
So from $3,000 to $3,500?
$3,500. If that's the will of the Commission.
In reference to doing that, Mr. Manager, I thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate that. In reference to that, I know it changed, which, will it change the final budget number?
It will change, we'll make some modifications if we are able to. Once I hear them all, I apologize, sir. Yes, it will change the numbers in your tentative budget resolution that's being considered tomorrow. So as I hear from the Commissioners tonight with their recommendations or suggestions and comments on this, I will have to look at where those dollars would come from and which line we will be able to make modifications on. Now, the number could, if we're able to work the numbers without increasing the budget or with doing it within it, our existing numbers, then we make modifications elsewhere. That's a possibility. But it's looking at everything from every Commissioner as we have that discussion tonight. Now, I would like to add, when we're going back to the Legislative, you know, your Legislative is done by resolution.
Yes.
So that resolution still have to come back to the General Body for action.
In an open meeting?
Yes, in an open meeting.
Would it have to be done tonight, sir, or?
Well, it won't be done tonight. This would, if the, once the budget is approved and that is accepted by the Commission, it will go into effect October 1. The budget will go into effect October 1. That resolution, once it's drafted and brought back to the Commission for your action, for your consideration would then, that will go into effect.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, City Manager Calma. Commissioner Polk, are you ready, sir?
I've already pretty much, yeah, so I'm sure it's reflecting, so I'm good.
Okay. Yes, I have spent some time with the manager and spoke with him in reference to areas that I was concerned about in reference to the Aritaka Contest and the Senior Citizen Program, so he had that opportunity to adjust that as well, sir. Cool. Mr. Manager, continue, sir.
Oh, it's, any other comments from the Commission?
No, we go to the public. At this present time, do we have any comments from the public in reference to our budget tonight? Any comments from the public pro the budget?
Mr. Mayor, I did receive, I know there's a public comment card.
You got it.
As for the general meeting regarding the budget, excuse me, regarding the budget request.
You have a comment card?
Yes, but it was for the general meeting, I don't know.
All right, there. Let me hear what Ms. Pittman have to say.
Just a quick question, will the budget be available to the public or would you privately? And if so, where can I find you?
It's available online.
Okay, on the city's website?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pittman, appreciate it. Thank you to City Manager Calma, continue, sir.
Oh, it's just the one request.
The public, at the 7 o'clock meeting, sir?
You could hear it at your 7 o'clock meeting or? Well, that's, you want to hear it at 7?
Yeah, I have it at 7 o'clock. Yeah, we do it at 7, yes.
Ms. Dave, they would, your item will come up, your item will come up at the 7 o'clock meeting?
Okay, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, I have a request here from the Manager's Office is to create an additional position. It is an Assistant City Manager for Eco-Tourism and Strategic Communication. The purpose of this request is for the creation of a new position to advance South Bay's long-term economic development, strengthen daily operations, and position our city as a regional ecotourism destination. As you all know, next slide. We are embarking on making South Bay a location on Lake Okeechobee a destination space. We want to further enhance our natural resources, our cultural assets that are being underutilized as economic drivers, and provide a dedicated leadership role for what we are pushing and what we are trying to do here in the city of South Bay. So this, this position would directly support the City Manager with operational responsibilities while driving two critical focus areas. Eco-tourism development and strategic communication. The strategic communication would lead public relations, media outreach, and community engagement strategies. That is something we have heard for a number of times that we are not reaching our residents. So it is, we are in a space where, let's do that. It is one, from a fiscal point, we're able to do, and just strategically is creating this position, next slide. Some of the key responsibilities is to translate goals into actionable work plans, provide updates on progress and initiatives, prepare reports, agenda items and presentations, supervise departments related to tourism, parks, and communication, oversee cross-departmental projects, establish high-service standards promoting sustainability. All of that, it is bringing what we are doing with our museum, The Village by the Lake, as well as just all of the ecotourism activities that's being proposed through our updated comprehensive plan that's currently underway. We currently have a grant for that that's also going. It is managing those opportunities here in the city of South Bay, next slide. Ecotourism development, planning and development, project management, and collaboration. We're maintaining those relationships that we currently have with the state of Florida and other funding agencies, next slide. Strategic communication, it is meeting that goal and the needs of the general public. Some of the benefits for what's being planned. It will expand South Bay economic base through sustainable tourism, create community pride and identity as a destination city, increases organizational capacity and project delivery, positions the city to secure external funding opportunities. Now, this Assistant City Manager salary range would be from $45,000 to $60,000 depending upon qualification. That's with health insurance, retirement, paid time off, and professional development activities as well. So in this role, we are able to fund it, support it, and sustain it as we're moving forward here in the city of South Bay. So as we present the changes in the budget for tomorrow's night, I mean, tentative budget hearing, you will see an added position with, within the City Managers Department, and the new, and a number where we're able to support this. Now, from a hiring perspective, once the budget is adopted, this position will be advertised, advertised in all mediums. There will be interviews for it. So for anyone that's thinking if the manager has someone in mind, no, I do not. I am, we will be looking for someone that will be able to meet the needs of the community, serve the community, have connections to the community, and be able to move ecotourism development opportunities forward at the same time of moving the city forward. Mayor, Commission, I stand for you, I hear from the Commission.
Thank you, City Manager Calma. I love the idea in reference to this because due to the ecotourism is really, is needed in the Glazer, and not only just in this South Bay, but the Glazer right on over to Hendrick County as well, sir. And I think it's a great idea that you decide that you want to bring this particular position under your department there, so I, I, I'm in favor of that, I really am. And reference that because you're not being biased in any type of way that you give anyone that opportunity to want to apply for this position, and the one that's qualified for position knows the one that you would be hiring in reference to this position at this present time, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Polk.
Yeah, sure, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I'm not opposed to it. I think I would need to have that presentation, this is my first time hearing about it, so. And, you know, we're going to have a number presented to us tomorrow. So that's very quickly, so just kind of just, just kind of see where we're going to pull the funds from and, and go over it just a little bit more. It's really pretty quick now, sir.
It, it did happen rather quickly. If I, if I share with the Commission and the public tonight the ecotourism opportunities that are taking place daily and the opportunities with Florida Commerce that's taking, taking place daily for the city and to benefit the city, they are happening. This morning, well, I'm gonna go back and share on the phone with the Deputy Secretary for Florida Commerce and some of the executive team members. They are urging the city to make application. There's new monies out there, $17 million. And I can safely say these words were shared. $17,000. And I know you're coming off of the 800, you're just receiving your 875. We are encouraging you to apply for your second round of funding now. Those, that application is due Friday. The point system from the reviewers is not going, considering we haven't used the 875 nor the 117, we are still being encouraged to apply. Submit our application for consideration because they know the work. And not utilizing the funds, I safely say it this way. Although we haven't drawn down any dollars, and sometimes that could be a hindrance, they are telling us still submit. So that won't be a problem for receiving funding going forward. So it is happening rather quickly. But to hear that from the Deputy Secretary to submit by Friday for your second round of funding in advance of utilizing or drawing, you have to draw down at least 50% of what you currently have in order to make application for the same project, essentially. They know we haven't drawn down 50%, but they still want to see our second application right now. So receiving that on a phone call Wednesday and saying, get your application in, meeting with the staff this morning and asking the question, hey, we're making application. And we're hearing from the Secretary, oh, no, Mr. Calma, they've already contacted us and said that your application is possibly coming in for submission. So yes, it is moving fast. And that is the reason why, in order to keep it moving, and our office don't get held up with it, it is creating that point person to get it done. Because what we're going to talk about next is your legislative agenda and having those things and pushing that item forward. So we are a city on the move, and being able to continue being on the move, it's having hands on the post in order to keep it going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Calma.
Yes, sir.
My, my only other thought was, why are we going to call it Assistant City Manager rather than like put it on the Economic Development or another department?
It strengthens the opportunity and the conversations as they are moving about. But then we also, just from a exempt, non-exempt perspective, it, it works in that favor. Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, what are some of the qualifications that the applicant is going to need?
We have that on the, oh.
I also would, while Mr. Collins is pulling it up.
Qualifications, it requires a bachelor's degree in public administration, communications, marketing, environmental studies, or any related fields. Experience, at least three years of progressively responsible experience in city management, communication, tourism, or related fields, including one year of managerial work. Having knowledge of sustainable tourism, recreation planning, conservation communication strategy, conservation communication strategies, and local government operations. Exceptional communication, leadership, project management, creative thinking with the results-driven approach. Those are some of the qualifications that's laid out.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Also, as far as like the interview and panel, would any of the Commissioners be able to sit on as an interviewer?
That is not something I would encourage because as your City Manager, I'm the staff person that you all hire. But it is, it is a, you will, I will keep you updated and informed throughout the process.
Thank you, too. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Commissioner King. You have any comments in reference to this position?
I'm not, I came in late, I don't even know the name of the position.
Mr. Manager, will you explain that again in reference to this position to Commissioner King, please?
There's a creation, you will see in your tentative budget on tomorrow, created a new position within the City Managers Department, an Assistant City Manager for Eco-Tourism Development and Strategic Communications. What I was just going over with some of the qualifications that individual would, would be required. And the compensation is programmed for $45,000 to $60,000 depending upon experience, including health insurance, retirement options, paid time off, professional development opportunities.
Is that a temporary job or permanent?
It would be a full-time position, FTE, full-time exempt position in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Thank you, City Manager Calma. That concludes your budget. Before we move on, do you have anything that you want to add on in reference to the budget?
Not if you.
All right, thank you. City Manager, continue, sir.
Oh, no other items, if there are no other questions or any ideas or presentations from the Commission on the budget? The tentative budget will be presented to the Commission tomorrow night with your final numbers and the recommendation presented tonight. Now, is that a consensus from the Commission on those recommendations for the adjustments presented earlier?
Commissioner, I'll come back to you, I promise.
I would tell, let me, let me tell, let me tell Commissioner King what those adjustments were. In Legislative, on Page 8 Legislative, in Special Projects, for Commissioner of Projects, that was a recommendation for an increase of $500. In line item 556, 401, Commissioner of Projects, is currently budgeted at requested $3,000, and the request was for $500. And also on Page 6 of Legislative, it was a request for a $12,000 for all roles, all Commissioners, at $12,000 annually.
And the first one was on Page 8?
Page 8 Legislative.
Page 6.
So earlier, the question was asked if there are any other recommendations from the Commission on, within the budget or communication you wanted to relay so we can make any adjustments in the 2025-2026 fiscal year budget?
Can I get with you tomorrow? I, I do have some, but I don't think we're going to have time. So I can get with you tomorrow morning?
I'll reach out with you with the time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, but I do have to say this. Mr. Mayor, we, we can go into our regular meeting and have the time for that conversation because it still must be done publicly.
Yes.
Any recommendations, they have to come and get a consensus from the, from the, from the Commission as well.
We would, we would do that, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. We have five more minutes. Entertainer motion to adjourn the workshop, and we'll start the regular meeting at 7 o'clock.
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McCalvin.
Second.
Talking about Commissioner Polk, workshop is adjourned, we'll reconvene at 7. Good evening, each and every one of you all. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll start our seven o'clock meeting September the second, twenty-twenty-five. Before we start our meeting, I just want to say thank you, and I do appreciate you coming out to this meeting tonight, a very important meeting when you deal with our budget, and just to hear what you have to say as well. To the young peoples from the Lake Shore Pre-Law Program, thank you all for being here tonight. We have a guest up on the dais tonight, Ms. Ramsen, that she was just speaking a little bit tonight, but I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate it. The parents, thank you for being here tonight as well. It means so much to us when I see parents come out and supporting their kids, because that's what we need. The Palm Beach County Shaft Department, the Palm Beach County Fire Department, thank you all for being here tonight. Madam Attorney, thank you as well for being here. Vice Mayor, Amazon, thank you, sir, for being here. The Vice Mayor from the City of Belgrade, we do appreciate it, you're always at our meeting. But we just want to say thank you, appreciate it. Staff, thank you for the wonderful work you're doing, and thank you for being here tonight. You was here today, earlier, in the eight hours, and you're here tonight, and we really do appreciate that. At this present time, we will have to start our meeting. We have the roll call, after the roll call, we have the prayer, and then after the prayer, we have the pledge of the flag. Pastor Bean will lead us in prayer tonight, sir, if you don't mind. Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King.
President.
Commissioner Pope.
President.
Vice Mayor McKelvin.
President. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Commissioner. Let us all stand, please.
Oh gracious heavens, Father, we, we thank you, God, for this, this day that you've made, God. We thank you, God, for this city and the residents, God. We pray, God, that you, of need, Father, God, be with this, our counsel, God, as we talk business of our great city here in South Bay. Be with the manager and the staff. It is in Jesus' name we do ask all these things, and we say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Bean, appreciate that prayer, sir, because we do not start a meeting without prayer in this particular chamber. Let's move to our voting conflict. Commissioner King.
None, sir.
Thank you, madam. Commissioner Pope?
None, sir.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor McKelvin?
None, sir.
Thank you, and none for me either. Stand, presentation of plaque commission, Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
Opportunity for the public to address the Commission. Before the public address the Commission, I just want to hear from the, the electoral pre, pre-law students. And I'd like the student to stand as she read tonight, and the parents, the parents here as well, I want you to stand as well, because we try to be united, especially when it comes down to our babies, in elementary school, in middle school, high school, college and university. We want to make sure that we stand with those individuals, because so many things is happening now, so many things are happening in, in school, and we want to make sure that we let these young people know that we're standing behind them, we're supporting them. At this present time, Ms. Ramsen.
Good evening. My name is Kyra Ramsen. I am an eighth grade pre-law student from Lake Shore Middle School. To Honorable Mayor Joe Kyle's, Vice Mayor McKelvin, and Commissioners Barry, Pope, and King. Last but not least, with much respect, City Manager, Mr. Leandre Campbell, and City Manager, Ms. Weeks. It's, City Attorney, Ms. Weeks. It is my distinct honor and privilege to sit among you tonight. Honorable Mayor Kyle might have a point of personal privilege before I continue.
Thank you, dear, I appreciate it.
At this time, I ask all of my classmates to approach the podium along with Mayor Kyle's. On behalf of Lake Shore Middle School Pre-Law Students, at slash as students, I instruct and coordinate Dr. William Jacob. We want to express our deepest sympathy to you and Ms. Kyle's for the passing of your son. We want to present you these cards and the token of our love for you and your family. You're always there for us, so therefore we feel that it is our, it is important to be here for you. You treat all of us as if we were your children. We love you too. As we begin our school year, we say thank you for the opportunities you have all extended to us, to sit among you, to hear the voice of people, citizens and community. We are confident that you are going to continue to keep the city moving forward. Mayor, Commission, City Manager, and City Attorney, and citizens of South Bay, let's move forward together and work together.
Great job, it's a great job. Thank you, Ms. Ramsen, thank you, the class of pre-law. And, you know, it's really touching, you know, I just lost my son Saturday, but they thought about this tonight, just to present these cards here, and I want to thank them. I want to thank each and every one of you all who have reached out to my family, and reached out to me as well, giving, you know, giving us condolences, and I, you know, it means so much to us, we don't overlook that there, it means the world to our family there. And I just want to, again, say thank you, I appreciate you all, and our babies, thank you all, Ms. Jacob, thank you as well. But this community thanks for all that you have done, all that you continue to do. We are trying to make the final arrangement on the thirteenth, which is the following Saturday, and hopefully that, you know, that you all continue to lift us in your prayer. Thank you, I do appreciate it. We'll continue tonight with our opportunity for the public to address the Commission, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Ms. Dorothy Davis. Ms. Davis? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Dorothy Davis, two fifteen Southwest Ninth Avenue, South Bay, Florida, three-three-four-nine-three. I'm here to request assistance for repairs. I've been in South Bay all of my life, I built a home here, I'm a taxpayer, and I am a winner, and I was listening at your city manager as he was rolling off dollars. I don't know whether that has anything to do with, that the seniors would be able to accomplish any of that, but I'm here to request if this Commissioners, the city manager could look into their budget, because not only me, there are other seniors that need some assistance, and I certainly would appreciate it if there are funds that can assist seniors in the city of South Bay, I'm certainly that they would appreciate it. So, that is my request, and I'm sure that there are other seniors that would like to request the same thing. So, if there is any comments from the Commissioners and the staff at this time, I certainly would appreciate it if you all could just address my concern. If not, then I'm willing to wait. City Manager, the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Commissioners.
City Manager Campbell.
It is, I know we did the American Rescue Plan Act, and I shared some of this with Ms. Davis. We did the American Rescue Plan Act, fund the minor home repair, minor home repair program, where the city was able to support its residents in the tune of approximately six hundred plus thousand dollars with those, with that fund for the minor home repair program. The home repair, home repair program, it is, it is something that is currently, senior home repair, repair program is something the Commission has not funded in its budget. There was a line item in community development, and that program historically, going back, going back approximately five to six years, we set aside twenty-five thousand dollars in a minor home repair program for the seniors. It was a struggle, one to how the program to get, get rolled out, because some of the needs at that time were much larger than twenty-five thousand dollars. So, how the Commission, or how we adopt a program to become, that would fit whatever available funding that you could possibly approve. One, I can tell you now, finding dollars that would meet the needs for the amount of seniors that have called and requested additional home repair, it is going to be a struggle. Even if we only did the five thousand dollar per homeowner, I can account for twelve phone calls right now that we've received, but there is no program as to how we would select those twelve residents. And creating a program to only fund twelve residents, it would be something, now you still have other residents that went unserved, but again, that would be left to the Commission as to how you would like to move, now, in setting aside funding and creating a program that will only meet the needs of those selective residents. With your Opera Fund, you gave it to every homeowner. There was no, if they were a property owner, and they lived in the city during COVID, after twenty-twenty, there were no restrictions beyond being a property and a home, property owner, homeowner residing in their home state of property in the city of South Bay. Everyone got up to that five thousand dollar amount. But when you get restrictive, I'm not trying to talk you, I want to talk you into it, but it's just, when you set aside a small pot of money, how creating a program to be selective, it is going to be very selective and restrictive. So, just, but that is what I have for you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Ms. Davis, you know, I'm, I'm all, you know, I am all in favor of trying to assist our seniors within the city of South Bay. I think we did a fantastic job in the Opera, I think we did it twice in assisting our residents in the city. But as the City Manager said, that you're talking about five individuals, so you can receive a call of twelve, and sometimes it does become a struggle, because you got to determine, you know, whether I want to go, whether we're gonna offer the money to this house, this house, that house there. And you choose the five individuals there, and the other seven, they're gonna come back, well, why you not, you not choose me in reference to this here? You know, no, you know, it won't be, it won't be no fighting among you all in reference to that. I think that they'll be throwing a jab at these five, these four Commissioners, the City Managers that says upon this particular dais. But my thing is, I think that we have to really look at this here and see, do, can we come up with the funding in reference to trying to assist some of the seniors in the city of South Bay? I'm not against it, don't get, don't, don't, don't think that I'm against it, because I'm not, because when it came with the program during the Opera, with the Opera money, I was total, really behind that particular program that was implemented during that particular time period, and I think it benefited a lot of residents within the city of South Bay, not only the seniors, but others as well, that needed home repairs in their home. So, I'm not against this here, but the thing about it is trying to find the money, and hopefully that we'll be able to find the money to assist some type of way there. So, that's my take at this present time. I'm speaking on my behalf as a mayor in the city, I don't, I can't speak on the behalf of the other Commissioner. I'm gonna do an opportunity to speak at this present time. Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for being here tonight. There's a program, I'm not familiar, I'm not sure if the city Economic Department is aware of it, it's called My Safe Florida. The Florida Legislative have, have allocated two-hundred-and-eighty million dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six phase of year for funding. So, you probably can check that website out and see if there's some opportunity for you, that they may can assist you through that program. It's called My Safe Florida. And the email is, I'm not emailed, the website is mysafeflorida.com. And then you also can check the Palm Beach County website. They sometimes have program that would assist residents and maybe seniors with minor repairs.
In reference to Palm Beach County, Commissioner King and Ms. Davis, I had the Community Development Director to check what you're saying in reference to that. I don't know whether they have funding at this present time, but My Safe Home, I have heard about that particular program as well, I have heard about that one. So, maybe you can check both of them out, as Commissioner King stated, and see what you can come up with.
All right.
Commissioner Pope?
Yeah, I echo the words of Commissioner King, Mayor Kyle's. I know recently I had a resident reached out to me about it, and I sent them a list of programs that I found, so I'll forward that over to you also, Ms. Davis. Thank you for coming, thank you for your service. And, you know, I'm not opposed to, if City Manager can find the funds, I'm not opposed to us doing something, but I'm sure you saw, you heard the budget. So, I thank Commissioner King for that.
Thanks, Commissioner King, and thanks to Commissioner Pope. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Davis. I also agree with the other Commissioners, if we can find it, if the City Manager can find the dollars, that we can kind of make it work in the budget, maybe it might not be five thousand, maybe we can do three thousand, or two thousand, I don't know, I'm not, just throwing out a number. I'm all for trying to help our seniors. So, if we can kind of make this work, or trying to, try to find an avenue to make it work, I'm all for it.
And I think, I, in fact, I know, because I know mostly all of you on the dais, and I'm sure that with your intelligence and your knowledge, you will be able to come up with something for our seniors, because our seniors is the epitome of this city. We have lived here, we pay tax here, and, and I'm not saying that you all have not done your best, but it's always something and more, and I'm not only speaking for myself, there are other seniors that perhaps, you know, they would like to know, and I talked with the city manager, and he did say that he would get with you all in your budget and find some money throughout your budget, and see if we can do something for our seniors. And I certainly appreciate you all listening to me, and God bless you.
Thank you.
God bless you, Ms. Davis.
Just before you leave, I want to say something, Ms. Davis. I want to make sure that, you know, that our seniors do understand that we did work with a lot of our seniors during the Opera time, the money that we receive, a lot of our seniors did receive the five thousand dollars to do the repair work in their homes there.
Yes, they did.
All right, thank you, dear, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Commission, I, I heard the Commission during that discussion about finding the dollars. The budget presented to the Commission did not include that, but if it's the will of the Commission and there's a consensus, I do need you all to give me a number in order to find. So, if you all would have that conversation amongst yourselves, give me a number as to what you're looking, you would, you would like to see in a senior home repair program for the city of South Bay. And then, if we find the dollars, we will place those in your budget, and at the same time, bring back a policy and/or an initiative in the form of a resolution for you all to act upon in order to distribute. in the form of a resolution for you all to act upon in order to distribute those dollars.
All right, thank you, City Manager Campbell. You said that you received twelve calls in reference to home repairs from our seniors, sir?
Yes, sir. I, I'm giving an average of, I didn't document those, I know I spoke.
That was a possibility it could be more or less.
Correct.
Okay, uh this commissioner, I like to, you know, I, I like to, it's possible that we can find the money, if we can find the money. I would definitely like for us to put money forward in reference to trying to assist our seniors in reference to home repair. The allocated amount per seniors. I think that we should use the same formula that we did before in reference to the five thousand dollar debt during the opera money that we received to make sure that there's enough money to try and accommodate the number of seniors that really uh want to apply for home repairs. Because I have received some as well in reference at also, so.
I think Mr. Manager is looking for a dollar amount.
Yes. Do anyone?
My reservation would be uh fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
And, Mr. Mayor? I, I had, I said sixty thousand because I took the twelve, multiplied it by two, so that gives you twenty-four uh residents and, and then I was looking at twenty-five hundred because you can do more residents. And then, like you said, we already, you know, gave out funds, but I'm not opposed to the five, it just brings you back down to twelve residents.
So what is your number? Do you agree with the vice, fifty thousand or what?
Yeah, I agree with the fifty. Sixty-two?
Fifty, you fifty and sixty, we do it that way. Commissioner King?
Say sixty.
Sixty, okay. Are you, uh, this commissioner in favor of the sixty thousand dollars? This manager, sixty thousand, sir?
I'll bring that back to you where we work the um resolution and the budget and bring that, that back to you all. I know that we're going into beyond the public comments. I know there may be some other items we were wanting to hear from Commissioner King on.
Three more?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue.
Uh, Dr. Wilhelmina Jacobs.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dr. Wilhelmina Jacobs. I reside at one three eight twenty Sheffield Street, Wellington, Florida. My date of birth is December eighteen nineteen fifty-four. I'm seventy-one years old plus eight months. The purpose of my comment tonight is to publicly inform this commission sadly to say I'm very bothered, but this is something I feel compelled that I must do. I once addressed the citizens of South Bay and also this commission that I have filed a formal complaint against Commissioner Barbara King with the Florida Commission on Ethics. While I would not provide specific details because the matter is under investigation, I feel compelled to express my concern regarding Commissioner King's conduct. In March twenty-four, Commissioner King stood in the very chambers and took an oath faithfully to serve the citizens of South Bay, uphold the laws and ordinance and conduct herself with integrity. Unfortunately, I believe she is failed to honor that oath. Commissioner King has to pay my name and character with false allegations that lack any documented proof. She also has involved one of you city officials who's sitting here tonight with this troublesome and unacceptable behavior. For the record, in case she doesn't know who I am, I want to make it clear who I am. I began my education on September the seventh nineteen fifty-nine at Roswell Elementary School as a five-year-old. I attended Lake Shore Junior High School. I graduated from Cluiston High School in nineteen seventy-two with honors. And I went on to earn my degree at Texas College in nineteen seventy-five, three years of college with honors. Since then, I have earned eight academic degrees, two which are doctor's degree, and I proudly served as an educator for more than forty-six years. I currently teach law in the subject which I also hold a degree. The law provision in one has been accused of any crime that they have a right to face their accused. I will not do that tonight. Based on the facts and evidence, I'm confident if we were in court tonight that I would prevail against Barbara King because she cannot substantiate her claims. Therefore, I've committed, I recommended to the Commission on Ethics that she be removed from office as soon as possible. I also believe that she should seek counseling as her actions have caused harm and are not reflected of the standard expected as an elective official. I'm sure some of you are old enough to remember the movie Child Play with Chucky. Every time they tried to destroy Chucky, he always came back. And I want this commission to know that as soon as his allegations and these findings are completed, I will be back before this commission with the findings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. We are allow the ethical commission to investigate this and move on, okay? Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Madam Clerk?
Also, um, I would like to say something.
No comments.
No comment? So um, the first, the first um public comment, we was able to respond. So not, no, 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 no.
I want this to go through, you know, she says she filed it through the ethical commission.
But, but no, no.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait, Madam Attorney. I'm pulling you in this for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throw me in the middle of this. Well, generally and typically, you all should allow public to comment without comments. Sometimes you have comments, sometimes you don't, so it's really in the discretion of the chair.
Okay, all right. Ms. King, uh, in reference to this allegation here, I know that, you know, she's saying that she filed something in between the ethical commission. And my thing about it, I refer the, for them to do their investigation and come back with their finding, whether guilty or not guilty in reference to this here. When you start commenting back and forth, back and forth, and reference, it does create a hostile environment. And I don't want to create a hostile environment tonight, and I rather for.
But you're being biased. You're being biased, and that's what it is.
Speak, Ms. Commissioner King, speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You've got three minutes to speak.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Jacob, for your comment, for clarif- clarity and to the public record. A text I sent to a pastor was entirely personal, did not identify no individual. And I was unre- and it was unrelated to my duties as a city commissioner. The statement referenced an event where multiple mayors were present. So it was not directed to any single person. It did not name no one. I have always conducted myself with integrity in my road. And this message does not constitute an ethics violation, attempts to misrepresent my private comments as an official misconduct are unfounded. I respectfully request that we focus on the city official business and not allow personal matters to destruct, disrupt this work of this commission.
I think that's why we allowed to go before the, and no, no comments, that's it. We allow this to go, she said it filed before the ethical commission. So we'll let ethical commission make their final decision in reference to this, okay? Thank you all. Continue, uh, Madam.
Yes, sir. Um, Ms. Virginia Crawford.
Ms. Crawford?
Virginia Crawford, two hundred Northwest Third Avenue, South Bay, Florida. My thing that I wanted to speak on is replacing Commissioner Berry. I feel that we, the public, should have the right to choose who replaces her. Not someone being appointed because they have an address in South Bay and used to live here but don't really live here anymore, or someone who's a former commissioner who might have got voted out of office or something. We got way more people come to commission meetings every week besides some people that people want to appoint. My thing is, let the public decide. Don't appoint anybody. Let one of y'all be the treasurer until the election is over. And that's what I'm saying because y'all say y'all work for us. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Continue.
Ms. Precious Pace.
Space.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Precious Pace. I reside at six eighty-five Northwest First Street. I don't know, I stopped my train of thought. Defamation is a defamation of character. That's not on my list.
No, city lights.
There are few lights out in the city. I don't know if the city is responsible for those or if it's our local private or our local um state responsibility of P and L, is that state? But I don't know if it's their responsibility, but they're the decorative lights that's out. They're greener, they're on a green pole. So um, I just wanted to, I had something else, but.
Ms. uh, Ms. Precious, I, yeah, thank you for bringing it up. Yes, ma'am. I uh, I have already talked to the city manager and our public works director in reference to those lights because I've been noticed those lights out on Highway twenty-seven as well. So hopefully we can get on those soon as possible and also other lighters in the, in the city. I also want to work on those and make sure there's lights within our city. And I want to thank you for bringing that to our attention again because we are working on that there, and so we will make sure that we get on again first thing tomorrow. And I do appreciate you being here. Appreciate you for bringing it to our attention tonight, madam.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, dear. Appreciate it. Thank you, we do appreciate it in reference to all the uh comments at this present time. We'll continue with our agenda uh, with our agenda for tonight, concerned agenda. Commissioner meeting August the ninth, nineteen twenty twenty-five and approve us, Commissioner meeting agenda September the second twenty twenty-five. Mr. Manager, the deletion uh, and add on to this particular agenda, sir.
No additions or deletion, no additions or deletion, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. May I have a motion to second to move the concerned agenda to the floor for discussion and approval?
So move.
Move by Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polk. Any question for the concerned agenda at this present time? Here and now, Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes.
Mayor Calvin.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Thank you, Commissioner. Passed by all commissioners. We continue resolution forty-two dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, appointing as a City of South Bay City Commissioner to serve until the next regularly scheduled city election in March twenty twenty-six, providing for adoption and representation, providing for an effective date.
City Manager Campbell?
Mr. Mayor Commission, this item was tabled and it is uh placed on your agenda. It was tabled at your prior meeting and is back for your consideration and discussion tonight pursuant to section one dash seven of city charter entitled resignation, suspension, removal, death of a city commissioner. The appointment of a city commissioner may be made by the remaining commissioners in the event of a resignation, suspension, removal, or death of a city commissioner.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Commissioner, what is your preference in reference forty, uh, resolution forty-two dash twenty twenty-five?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes, I would like to table resolution forty-two twenty twenty-five to March twenty twenty-six when the next election is up. The rea- my reason is um, I want Commissioner Berry to finish her race. So I would like to table resolution forty-two twenty twenty-five to March twenty twenty-six.
I know you have anything to say, Madam Attorney. You good? I noticed you were looking up here. That's why I, I called you out.
Well, I'll just say that um the statute does, Florida statutes does require for every um commission in the event of vacancy to have a uh policy in place that um is adhered to. It is contemplated that you all would select someone. Fortunately, your charter, unlike a lot of other charters, does not give a timeframe. A lot of them give like within thirty days or something like that. The only issue with that is if you have two people voting one way and two people voting another way, you can, you're going to have a problem getting your business um completed. And it also makes it um uh a little bit um more difficult to have a quorum, maybe, maybe. So I would just kind of throw those out there as, you know, things that you may want to um think about, but it's not written, your um, your code or your charter is not written in a way that would require an immediate appointment. But my legal advice is that if, to the extent that you can, maybe give yourself some time to, you know, think about it or maybe delay it. But you probably don't want to wait until, you know, twenty twenty um, twenty twenty-six to do it. But it, it, it's totally up to the commission. And it's, and it's within y'all's hands because it does not have a strict requirement in the charter or code. It's just the, you know, the two to two vote. If it fails, then you don't have, you don't have your business going forward.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. We have a motion by Vice Mayor McCalvin. Have a second. A second motion. Any discussion at this present time from this commission? Commissioner King?
I agree. Uh, we should let the um, the residents decide who fill that seat.
Commissioner Polk?
I have no comment, sir.
No comment, okay. But, you know, I thank you, Madam Attorney, for that, that information there because I I, I, at the last minute, I kind of sensed something that was taking place upon this Diaz here. And I seen more or less about what you just said just a few minutes ago in reference to deadlock of this particular commission here. It was still looking the same particularly when at this present time. But my thing is that, that, you know, I'm in favor of allowing this attorney to to aspire in March of twenty twenty-six and then allow a new commissioner who's never run it at a particular time period when they qualify in December and then the election in November, I mean, March. I'm in favor of that. I really am in order of Commissioner Berry. Now, this commission want to, want to say that we'll just wait and allow the public to make that decision there. I know something we have to bring back. It's just like having another election if we do this year. And uh allowing the public to make that decision in reference to those seven months which is remaining at this present time. Because we are in month of September, we got uh six months, seven months more before the next election. So I, I just want to see is like which direction this commission want to go. Do you want to delay it as, as the uh motions on the floor at this present time? And if we decide to vote yea or nay, then we'll go that direction there. So it's primary to this four commission that sits upon this Diaz here at this present time. So you all have the opportunity to make, you guys have the opportunity to make that decision. Which direction you guys want to go, whether you want to be vacant until that particular time period or you want to have another special election in reference to fill the aspire time of Commissioner Berry. Whether you're talking about another colle- another election, we are talking about more, what, close to twenty? Thirty thousand dollar, Madam Clerk? Just to have a special election for seven months, that's what will cause this particular uh, uh city. It is your tax dollars, and I don't like to waste uh residents' tax dollars. I do not. And I stand firm with Commissioner or Vice Mayor McCalvin to just wait until the aspire term of Commissioner Berry, which would be in March of twenty twenty-six. That's me. That's my take in reference to this whole scenario here. Because I don't believe in spending twenty, thirty thousand dollars, your tax dollars, just for six months. I don't believe in that. I, I consider it a waste. That's why I look at it as a waste. So I'm in favor with the motion that had been made at this present time to delay this uh, this uh this six, this, this resolution until the aspiration time Commissioner Berry. That's me. Any more discussion at this present time? Madam Clerk, call the role. He made the motion.
Can you second?
I second, yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes.
Mayor Calvin?
Yes. Thank you. Passed by all four commissioners. We'll move on. Resolution forty-three dash twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Palm Beach County, Florida, appointing a city treasurer, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell.
Mr. Mayor Commission, pursuant to section two dash three of the charter, the treasurer shall perform such duties as commission may prescribe by an ordinance or resolution. Due to the passing of former treasurer, the city of South Bay desires to appoint a new treasurer from the existing members of the city commission. This is another item that was tabled for your discussion and appointment of a treasurer from the sitting commissioners.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. This commission, what's your preference in reference to appointing someone to fill? Mr. Commissioner, what's your preference in reference to appointing someone to fill the balance of those term as a treasurer? Because we definitely need a treasurer within the City of South Bay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes, I would like to um appoint Commissioner Albert Pope for the treasurer.
Have a motion, have a second. Second that motion. Any discussion at this present time from this commission is per resolution forty three dash twenty twenty five. Here in non medical, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cal.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, it passes three uh three to one. We continue resolution forty four dash twenty twenty five. Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, accepting the bid from the Good Companies of Florida Inc. in response.
Madam Madam Clerk, before you move forward, I think that res I think this resolution forty three dash twenty twenty five, you have to be sworn in, am I correct?
No.
You do not?
No, the resolution, I believe, is fine.
Fine, okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Attorney, appreciate it. Continue, uh Madam Clerk.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of South Bay, Florida, accepting the bid from the Good Company of Florida Inc. in response to RFP twenty twenty five dash zero two for the residential solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling collection services authorized and execution of the attached agreement between the City of South Bay and the Good Companies of Florida Inc. For the period October one twenty twenty five through September thirtieth twenty thirty two, providing for adoption and representation, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Senator Manager Cal.
Mr. Mayor Commission, on February twenty fifth twenty twenty five, the City of South Bay published request for proposal for residential solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling collection services. The advertisement was published on demand star and on city's website. Specifically, the city issued RFP twenty twenty five zero two to consider proposals from the qualified firms performing residential solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling collection services, with such services set to begin October one twenty twenty five through September thirtieth twenty thirty two, with an option to renew for an additional seven-year period in the discretion of the city following a vote by the commission of the City of South Bay. The Good Companies of Florida Inc. submitted the most responsive and responsible proposal for residential solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling collection services for the city. The city manager is recommending that the city accepts proposals and enter into agreement with the Good Companies of Florida for residential solid waste, bulk waste, and recycling collection services in the form attached here too as exhibit A. The city commission finds and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Good Companies of Florida is in the best interest of the city. So Commission Mayor and and Mayor Commission and public, the this proposal presented by the Good Companies for solid waste collection services took into account all that was spoken over the years for solid waste collection services. Um from the timely pickup to the garbage juice, to uh community benefits, scholarships, and all of those things. So I can sit here at this time and recommend approval of this resolution and agreement moving forward with the Good Companies.
Thank you, Senator Manager Cal. May I have a motion to second to move resolution forty four twenty twenty five to the floor for discussion and approval?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pope?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor McCalvin. Any discussion at this present time, Commissioner King, Pope, Commissioner Pope, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Manager, were there any other um bids from any other companies um that submitted for this this job?
Yes, I know we presented to the commission um several other respondents, be it Waste Management, The Good Companies, Panzerella, and Big Dog Express.
Okay, um did we see their bids? Because um if I can remember, I only received um um the bids from um the goods.
That is what was presented to the entire, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner King. You saw the bids presented here in the open meeting. You and I also had a meeting where I shared all of the proposals that were submitted with you, submitted to the city via email.
You shared it with me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't I don't re um because I remember um asking um to see the other bids, but I never received them.
They they were here and you asked, you were sitting here in the meeting in the commission chambers and asked for all of the bids, and I emailed them to you at the time of request.
No, sir, but um anyway, thank you, I never received them, um thank you.
I provide that confirmation before we end tonight.
Thank you, Senator Manager Cal, I thank you, Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope.
No, I'm excited, especially to hear that they took to heart um the recommendations we gave them as it pertains to community support, the scholarships, and of course, the cleanliness of other communities, so um I'm anticipating what the change will bring about for our residents hence in this outfit.
Thank you, sir. Uh Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes, I'm excited as well, um especially with them hiring. They're promising us that they're gonna be hiring local, and they actually just did um a local um training this a couple of weeks ago, so I'm excited about the goods company.
Thank you, sir. So am I, I'm very excited about the good company, because due to the fact the rate set there, they're running until the residents in the city, that's why I pay in the quality of service. And you remember when I was talking at last meeting that by this garbage juice in the city there, I do not want no company coming in with this garbage juice in the city, because I don't want no resident to come out their home on a Wednesday morning or Saturday morning, smell all this stuff in, you know, in their in in their community. No, we're not gonna have that, we're not gonna have that at all. And they guaranteed us that would not happen within the City of South Bay, and I'm very excited about it. And ditto what Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope, and uh and Vice Mayor said in reference to their hiring local peoples. You know, it makes a huge difference, because due to the fact when the company come in here, we want to make sure they give our local peoples opportunity to work for those companies here, you know? And the conversation I have with the city manager today and other things is coming about in reference to the scholarship as well for our youth in the Glaze area, especially for the City of South Bay. It come to show you that the negotia- negotiation that took place during that particular time period, it was a lot of things that was uh was offered to the City of South Bay and its residents, and we're gonna take advantage of those benefits that they're offering to to the to our residents in the City of South Bay. So I'm in favor of this particular resolution here, and uh I just want to say thank you, commissioners. We do appreciate you coming and referencing that, and want to make sure the residents know as well, the race is very great, a good race that 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 you will see once this uh resolution approved, and then the city manager can move on with the contract. Thank you for just paying attention to what we have to say in reference to this, because we want to make sure that we get the best for the residents within the City of South Bay. No off-the-wall people's coming to City of South Bay and treat you any type of way. It would never happen, because I know in other cities, they were not allowed to happen. We're not gonna allow it to happen in this city either, because you deserve the best, and you will get the best from this particular garbage service there. But I just want to thank you all. Any more discussion from this commission? Ready to float a vote? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Um before I I make my decision, the reason why I would not agree to this um company, because I didn't have the opportunity to look at the other bids to see what the other company was um um presenting to the city. So at this time, I vote no.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cal.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, residents and city managers as well. It passes three to one. We'll continue with our agenda for tonight. Roswell Elementary School report, I know Ms. Hightower not here, but Vice Mayor is here.
Yes, um Ms. Hightower will be at our next commission meeting. Um but tomorrow, we have our first SAC meeting starting at five thirty, and also open house will start at six o'clock, so please come up um and look at some of the wonderful things that the kids have already started doing at Rosenwall Elementary School. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, do appreciate it. Financial report, I know that we just appointed a new treasurer, and I know each and every one of you had the opportunity to see the financial report from our our finance director, Mr. Massey, and I know it's a lot of numbers, and I know a lot of pages in there as well, but I want to thank him for the wonderful report that he did render. Thank you, sir, all the backup, all the backup materials there as well, invoices, number, I knew it was paid to in high and what was the purpose of being paid, paid to that particular vendor, sir. I do appreciate that report, sir. I read the entire report that you once you sent it to us, sir, and I want to thank you. Uh may I have a motion to approve the financial report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um I would like to table the finance report.
Okay.
So our new finance um commission will be able to to listen to everything that's going on.
Your treasurer.
The treasurer, I'm sorry.
We have a motion, we have a motion to to table the finance uh finance report, have a second.
Second.
A second, second by uh Commissioner Pope. Any question at this present time per the table on this particular financial report? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Pope?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McCalvin?
Yes.
Mayor Cal.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, Senator Manager Cal, I thank you, Commissioner, it passes by all four commissioners. Senator Clerk's report?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, Senator Manager's report?
Uh just a few items, mayor, but I want to go back to, on May twentieth, I presented to the commission and provided May twenty 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 five, just for the residents, uh just from a space of clarity to the commission uh with the Good Companies. The Good Companies proposed rates for residential services was approximately thirty nine dollars a month. Waste Management provided a rate of fifty six dollars per month. Panzerelli provided a rate of forty six dollars per month for solid waste removal services. The bids were made available, uh all of the packages were made available, and the commissioners that asked for it or desired to receive it via email was receipt, provided that back in May. But for the residents, I wanted to let you know that the Good Companies' rate for residential curbside services, that's including your your curbside, your bulk waste, and recycling, was approximately thirty nine dollars a month. Keeping in mind that the rate you're being billed on your utilities is still approximately twenty, it's under thirty dollars per month. So when you calculate your utility expenses and you look at your garbage rate, recycling rate, it is going to remain um round about the same amount. Will you see an increase October one? Yes, you will see an increase October one of, I think we built in in the ordinance that was adopted, five percent in that ordinance, that is the adjustment you will see. Not, will you ever reach what's actually being paid for your garbage services? Maybe, but that won't happen during the life of the ordinance that's been adopted by the commission, presented in a public setting, and adopted by the commission. So you may never reach that thirty nine dollars. I don't know, but I can tell you right now, in accordance to the ordinance that's been adopted um and presented to the public and adopted by the commission, your rates will remain the same uh with the increases that's built in. However, what the city just approved tonight for the Good Companies as presented uh back in May, and we've had this, we had this other conversation, I think in July, uh with the commission, as the Good Companies is thirty nine dollars a month, Waste Management at fifty six dollars a month, Panzerelli's at forty six dollars a month. You don't see a cost for Big Dog Express, because they did not provide the numbers per month, so we would be able to calculate it and present that information to you. So those are the rate services, those are the garbage, the solid waste removal services that has been adopted uh tonight by the commission. The next item is Mayor Commission is legislative. As we are moving closer to the legislative priorities, I've received um from Commissioner, well, from Mayor Cal's, I made notes. There we go. As I share with the commission, it is it is not advantageous for us to look at uh the community center moving forward for legislative requests. Now, if that is the will of the commission to adopt, then by all means, that is what we will do, and we will fight to receive that funding. As this, these conversations taking place in Tallahassee, I've had personally, uh professionally with Tallahassee, I would strongly encourage the commission, if we could keep whatever request under a specific threshold, like under two million dollars, I think we will have an opportunity uh have favorable options. Now, what those requests would look like are beautification and type projects. So the one thing in my conversation with the mayor was taking MLK as, oh, I'll I'll speak on that item. Um on the speed study that's being done on MLK for the school zone, is taking MLK and beautifying um MLK Palm Beach Road leading into Rosenwall. We're talking brick pavers at crosswalk sections, uh some additional safety items for the pedestrian crossing area, working the median. So simply put, is a re re is a beautification project along MLK, including resurfacing the street to continue its life. Because as you, as you walk it and ride it, you will see that some of the bumps from ten years ago are coming back. So just resurfacing that roadway, milling, resurfacing that roadway, as well as beautifying it, removing the hedges, and making a brand-new look along MLK leading into um Rosenwall, uh that's from twenty seven to Rosenwall. That is one project. Also, just a full park from the playground areas where they haven't been touched, the walk path is upgrading all of those areas. Uh not just at one park today or one park next time, doing both at the same time is park enhancement in the City of South Bay. So those are the two items, oh, and the decorative lighting along um MLK Boulevard as well. So those are the items that I've received and had conversations with the mayor. But commission, I am urging and encouraging so we can, you to submit whatever items that you would like to go in your legislative priority, submit those items. They don't have to be fine-tuned, we'll do that internally. But if you just give me the idea as to something you're interested in putting into that proposal, let's let's do that so we can get it on the agenda and you all can adopt it um so we're able to advocate beginning next month. So um please get those items to me, mayor, I would pause there.
Mr. Manager, the conversation that you had with what we're trying to do, we talked about the lighting down at uh Northwest First. And we had a conversation with Lane Lane today, or you just want to wait until you get information back from him, sir?
Yes, uh we did, we did have a conversation with Elon, our government rep at FPNL regarding um light lighting along Northwest First going to Villalago. But I can tell you that it's gonna be a little heavier lift than, but we can put something in the proposal, in the legislative agenda for this year, but let, I will have that conversation with FPNL, and it may not need legislative action. Um but once we get to a certain point and he's fully aware as to what has been taking place, conversation over the past ten years. But once we get to a certain point and he's fully aware as to what has been taking place, conversation over the past ten years.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, I, um, I could give you my request now, uh, Mr. Mayor. I sign on to what you have there from the mayor. Cause that's sort of been a conversation that I've had also about that Martin Luther King, so I second that. And so you won't look to receive anything else further from me.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I'll get with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. King, you'll get back, you'll get with the City Manager tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, I conclude your report, sir.
The last item, I do want to, before I finish with the manager's report, it is here from, um, if we could just go back to those budget items. So we can, I can bring some closure to that we hear from Commissioner King on those items.
Commissioner King?
On, uh, page twenty-two, section eighty-one.
From the what town?
Eighty-one. Public Works. Page twenty-two?
Yes.
Same page, twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yes.
Um, then, uh, like, the budget item, uh, for nineteen thousand dollars. For, that's a monthly bill, um, for estimate use of oil and gas for all PW autos plus the usage of lawn mowers, bicycles and other public works equipment using prior information and monthly, um, average. Going to nineteen thousand, I think, um, with, uh, how many vehicles does that include?
Think we have approximately seven or eight vehicles within the Public Works Division.
And we're using all the vehicles, all seven?
Yes.
And how many are take home?
Two.
Two take home in, uh, Public Works?
Yes.
And so the seven vehicles and that's including the, the two take home?
There may be three, as you're asking that question. I think the director within the, I think there may be three take-home vehicles within Public Works.
Okay. And the average, um, I think we can, we can save, um, save in that department, uh, with, um, eliminating one or even two of those, uh, vehicles, um, in the public work, the take-home vehicles.
Understanding that, so what is the will of the commission, uh, as we look at this number?
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Poe.
I mean, uh, I understand what Commissioner King is stating, but I remember, I recall, um, recently, us having some, some, uh, overnight issues where I had to call the city manager and he had to get ahold of the Public Works Director, um, to get them out there for some emergency. So I think it's, uh, expedient to us to have some, uh, Public Works, uh, employees to have a vehicle, so that there's no excuse when we call on them, they can get here. I think it's something that is, uh, uniform across municipalities.
No comment?
I, 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 I'm trying to figure this out. I know they have, we budget for nineteen thousand dollars per year. This year here in reference to this particular budget. And I'm trying to figure out, uh, Commissioner King, in reference to taking that one truck out and, uh, I don't know where you want to change that particular number to what? Is a particular number that you want to come up with?
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm, I'm looking at nineteen thousand dollars, uh, from, uh, I mean, just in, in, in fuel uh, for these, um, uh, vehicles. And I think, I mean, if, if we have a, a, a Public Works Director and maybe a, a, uh, another, um, personnel that takes home a, a vehicle. So how often are we having these, um, issues where someone got to be called in? Or, or is it happening regularly that we need to have these, um, vehicles that's utilizing all this, um, fuel?
But it, it just, I understa-
Go ahead, Mayor.
The averages, I think is average per month is fifteen, fifteen fifty. That's the average for all the, all the equipment per month. That's due to the lawn mowers and, you know, different vehicles. That's the average, whatever it is in the Public Works Department, that's the average of fifteen hundred.
Looking at about two hundred and some dollars per vehicle. Is average.
That's the average.
Got to take into account of the fuel, how much the gas is now too, all that comes into play. I burn, I burn that much right around myself.
Okay, on our page, um, twenty-eight.
In the same department?
Yes, same department.
Okay.
Okay, we have, um, uh, two thousand for, um, signs, are we replacing signs, um, every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If, if street signs or the stop signs are blown down, blown away, knocked over, ran over, um, any of the street signs that we have to replace as they age out, we are replacing signs annually. We actually, two thousand dollars is not enough for what the, for the cost of signs as to what we are doing. Our goal is to ensure all the streets are labeled, properly labeled throughout the city. The two thousand dollars will not do that, but we, as we reconstruct or resurface roadways, we include signage in those reconstruction dollars and we do it at that time. And this is for some, just we replaced two, uh, just using the Jorrell when we redid those signage. And I think that was approximately two hundred and some dollars just for that space alone for signage. Stop signs with the FDOT, F dot regula, regulation size is approximately a hundred, um, just looking at some of, trying to recall some of the invoices, invoicing is a hundred and eighty, close to two hundred dollars for those signs. Street signs, because they all have to get different numbering and lettering on them, that also includes, um, increased the cost.
And another thing to add on to that, Commissioner King, I do, I, you know, when, uh, when a resident sees a sign is out or a sign need to be replaced, you know, they take a picture of it, they send it to me forward to the city manager as well, and we have encountered, uh, stop signs that have really faded away. You could not see them, you know, hoping that nobody did not, you know, had an accident in that particular area.
Okay, um, thank you. I was just looking at some areas that, um, maybe we can, uh, you know, try to save, um, that I saw that, you know, uh, maybe we can save some money, um, so that we can, you know, maybe provide for our seniors.
Thank you. Continue, Mr. Manager.
The, um, last item, and with those things in, in mind, I, I do have to ask Mayor Commission, the city manager's office has re, received several calls, very suggestive calls, um, and/or, um, complaints. And I normally try not to address those items here. However, we are in budget season and times are, it's a little sensitive. The dollars we have, being a good steward of those dollars, come into question at this time. So we've received some very strong statements of fraud taking place in the city of South Bay. And I, I need to let this commission and the public know that I said this at the last meeting and it hasn't stopped, and I don't expect it to stop. I would love for it to stop because as we begin our legislative session and we are asking other entities to support the city of South Bay, when conversations and allegations are being made regarding fraud or something is taking place that's not right, it doesn't look good on the city. Now, maybe there's an attack on the city manager and office of the city manager directly. However, I sat there before the commission at the time and what I said to the commission at the time is, I'm, I, I don't want your money. It's a decent wage. But it does not look good if we have to have those conversations and lose opportunities if that's, if the fraud conversation is taking place. So if there is a concern regarding fraud in the city of South Bay, I encourage you to bring those items to me directly and/or to the finance director directly. And exclude me from it if I'm the one you're thinking is misappropriating city dollars. The city of South Bay, and I, I will stand on my two feet and say, city of South Bay does not have enough money for me to take. I will not bother it because at the end of the day, and I think everybody that's sitting out there knows my family, and I, and I'm talking about my mom and dad. Because whatever hits the newspaper first, it is never going to be Leandre Camel. And I don't want that for the city of South Bay. I don't want that for myself. I don't want that for my family, nor do I want it for my son. So if whomever and wherever, just allow me or the finance director to provide you what you are looking for regarding fraud that's taking place in the city, ask him, he will give it all to you. I'll give it to you. But identify where the fraud is happening and where the misappropriations of dollars are happening. Don't throw an umbrella out there and expecting something to come back. I do recognize the industry that I work in. I signed up for this a long time ago and I'm willing to take it and I can handle it. City of South Bay, on the other hand, other side of it, cannot handle it. We have developed a great rapport across the state, across the nation because those things are not happening. I just ask if there is, I'll leave that there. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, City Manager Camel, and, uh, I just want to say one thing to everyone here. Some of y'all have been sitting here when the audit report were read in reference to the city of South Bay. There was no fraud found, no one was taking money during that particular time period. And that's where we have this done every year, to make sure you know exactly what is taking place with your money within the city of South Bay. And I'm, I'm not going to prison. I'm not going to prison for nobody, no one.
Me neither, Mr. Mayor.
For messing with city money. I'm not going to do that. I'm being open and honest with you. I'm not going to prison.
It's not enough.
There's not enough money for that, none whatsoever. And I'm not going to prison at all. If any type of fraud is taking place in this city here, I talk to that, that director to our, our finance director. And I told him straight up, if you see something that you're not pleased with, you let me know and I'm going to support you. You're not finna sign off, you're not finna do this, not gonna do that there, if you're not comfortable with it. Because he's our financial director, and it'll come down to dollars in this particular city. We go in directly, our finance director, talk to him about it. So it haven't been no fraud taking place at all. We had to sign a letter after audit report was finished. We had to sign a letter. Each one of these commissioners had to sign a letter. If you see that, if, if you know of any fraud that's taking place within this city here, you have to say yea or nay, and then you have to sign off on that there. And each one of these commissioners that sits on this particular deal is, they sign off with no fraud at all within the city of South, they know of any fraud within the city of South Bay. Is this a mindset of people that thinking that money is being taken from this city? I'm sorry, you're wrong. You are wrong. So all this thing about fraud going on in this city of South Bay, you need to get in your wagon and go on another, go down another road because it's not going to take place in this city here, none whatsoever. Because of how you feel, it's not going to happen in this particular city.
That's right.
And I'm going to make sure that, I'm going to make sure that myself, that no fraud is taking place. And I can talk to this gentleman here, our finance director, I can talk to our city manager, let's sit down and talk if you feel that something not right in this particular city. Because we will not, I say we, will not take taxpayer money, none whatsoever. We will not misuse taxpayer money. Because I see what Doge is doing now, and I'm not finna, I don't want this city to be involved in nothing like that there, none whatsoever. So I just want to say that there because I have heard the same thing myself. But resident, your money is safe, your money is there. So you don't have to worry about no fraud taking place within this city here. Thank you. Mr. Manager, conclude your report, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. City Attorney Board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
The legislative session, as you all know, adjourned on June sixteenth of this year. And I think that a lot of legislators, um, well, a lot of city officials believe that, um, we kind of dodged a bullet this year with, um, property taxes and property tax reform not coming to fruition. Uh, but, um, the League of Cities, I've been hearing them at meetings, different places and seeing communications. And they are, um, encouraging city commissioners to go to Tallahassee. Um, the legislative session starts on January the thirteenth of twenty-seven. Um, however, committee meetings happen earlier than that. And so if, to the extent that you all, um, can plan to go and speak with the Uniform Voice, joining other, uh, leaders around the state, um, to let them know what you're doing with your taxpayer dollars and how important it is to, um, have services like the ones that you were talking about tonight, by possibly doing something with your seniors or doing other things, you know? If you have less dollars, you can't do as many of those kind of things. And so, um, just want to throw that out there that, um, and I'm sure Mr. Ma, uh, the Mr. Manager will be working with you all to schedule something, but I'm hearing a lot of, um, talk, you know, where they're really trying to get the message out that, uh, they really want to hear from, um, various cities to come to Tallahassee, as you always do. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Madam Turner, to appreciate that report. And most time before the session start, we try to go up a little bit early to talk to our representative senators and let them know because you're right, is what taking place with the property tax thing is, is, is all over Florida. And the Florida League of Cities have brought that to our attention and thank you for that as well. And we have to continue to work with them and do what we have to do within our cities. Before I go to the future agenda item, do you have a report from the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department or Palm Beach County Fire Department? I just want to thank you all for being supportive of Commissioner Barrett during the funeral. He was there, he was there in numbers and we really do appreciate it. We thank the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department for the number of motorcycle deputies that was out here, you know? You did a fantastic- You know, you did a fantastic job and the fire department as well. So we just want to say thank you on behalf of the city, on behalf of this council as well and all our residents within the city of South Bay. Thank you and we do appreciate you all. Future agenda items. Here, Non. Commissioner coming for the good order, Commissioner King.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for coming out, being a part of your city on government. And you have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Commissioner Pope.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, uh, again, want to thank the residents coming out tonight. We thank, uh, thank my wife for being here tonight. And, uh, congratulations, uh, to our, uh, sister Kyra. She does such a great job. And, uh, we just want to, you know, that's one of our proud miracle by faith residents right there. So it's a, it's a po- frog, don't praise his old paw, so. And I did all the, the words of the manager and, um, the mayor in, in the sentiments of talking about that paw. And so, man, I, I love this city and I would never do anything to tear it down. It is my goal to see us continue to build it. I just think that we're on the right foot. We are building. And I just hate when we even have to have conversation like that in the public because I do get, you know, people are listening to us on the federal level, state level. Those that we're asking these dollars from, they're listening to us. And so we want to put our best foot forward when we come to this day. And, uh, again, I appreciate, uh, Vice Mayor, Mayor for, uh, the appointment for, as the treasurer. You know, one of the things that I, um, believe in is that, for one, I respect my elders. And I respect Dr. Barry, respected her while she was here. I respect her while, in, while she's gone. And no one could ever feel any of Dr. Barry's shoes, never. But I do believe that I'm competent enough since I've been appointed to, um, do the very best that I can to serve as your treasurer, and I will do that. And so I appreciate, uh, my colleagues for that tonight. Beyond that, I am very pleased with what we're doing. I'm still, uh, I, I could, I could have said this in the manager's report, but I don't, I don't want a response tonight, but, you know, about that, uh, that, uh, scheduling for the recreation in the afternoon, I'll stop by and talk to you about it. Yes, sir. Yeah, something that I really want us to do. But other than that, hey, I feel good tonight and, uh, that's my good of the order for you. Good night.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Pope. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, um, Commissioner Pope. Again, congratulations on your new appointment. I just want to thank everyone for coming out, being, being a blessing to the city. Thank you for being here. And I would like to bring up another item for Dr. Barry. Um, her birthday is December twenty-eighth. So in honor, in honor of her, I would like for the city, um, the, the community to come together and have like a Dr. Barry Day in the community. That's something that, uh, I would take on me and the community. And we'll just have, like when we used to be in college, we call it Be Out Day. So we'll, I want to be able to present something for the community for December twenty-eighth, which is Dr. Barry's birthday. Um, and make that an annual South Bay community event. That's something that I want to work on and, you know, I hope I have the blessings of my colleagues as well as the residents. Um, and let's make this happen. Let's make this happen for Doc. So her name would never, ever be forgotten. Um, have a good night. May God continue to bless you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, uh, King, Commissioner Pope, thank you for your comments tonight. I just want to say thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for listening to what is taking place within the city of South Bay. And I'm a true believer in saying, you know, listen at what is taking place and people's coming back telling me this and telling me about this, about that. Because when it start going to two and three people's ears, you know, it turn to all sorts of ways, all sorts of ways, you know? It won't be the truth. It would just be gospel and that's it. You know, but the thing about it, you continue to come to these commissioner meeting because due to the fact that we have to serve you all. You elected us to serve and that's what we're going to do, serve. And I just want to say thanks to the babies tonight. I, you know, you might have me some babies because they're my babies. They are my babies. I know that she's an instructor, but they are my babies. I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Parents, thank you. Thank you for supporting your kids. Really do appreciate it because that's what we need. We need the parents to support their kids now. And we just seen the young man that's got shot from Florida State University, just shot the other day, went home to visit and he got shot, you know? And we want to keep our children out of those dangerous zone there. And the Palm Beach County Shaft Department doing a fantastic job of the work they doing within the Glaze area here. So we want to continue to just hover around the Palm Beach County Shaft Department. I express to each and every one of y'all. I don't want to support the Palm Beach County Shaft Department a hundred percent. I support them a hundred and ten percent. Regardless of how you feel, how I support them, I'm going to continue to support them. Because the conversation that we had in reference to things that's taking place in this city of South Bay is great. Cause we, since on these ideas, they do contact us and talk to us. When we got in the community there, they talk to us about what is taking place. No, we're not going out to try to do their job, but we stand back and wait till them come, wait till they come and talk to us about what's taking place in this city. Because our eyes is on, the same as their eyes on the city of South Bay and the resident, eyes of these commissioners on the residents as well. But I just want to say thank you and I do appreciate you guys. I mean, God continue to cover each and every one of y'all. And when you hear negative things that's taking place in this community here, feel free to try to correct them and invite them to come to our commission in order for them to know precisely what is taking place. Instead of dwelling on the negative thing, we want to dwell on the positive thing because so many great things are taking place in this city here. And I'm so proud. I'm so proud of this, this, this commission here. I'm so proud of that. Our attorney, I'm proud, our staff member, city manager, I'm so proud of her. Because the wonderful and great things is taking place in this city here. And it's not because of all, because of us in this city here, because of you as residents of being, getting involved and being concerned of what taking place. Feel free to come and talk to us about different things. You have, you have this mic here. If something that you want to talk about, you want to ask question about it, come to this mic, fill out a, a, a comment card and come and talk about it. Don't be shy because we're here to listen at what our residents says in this city of South Bay. Again, I said thank you and I do appreciate it and have a safe trip back home. And babies, don't forget to tell your mother and father that you love them. Don't forget that. When you go to bed tonight, tell mom and dad that you love them. When you wake up in the morning time and mother and dad is still there, you tell them that you love them. Because it means so much. Because mom and dad go to work. Thank you. I do appreciate it. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So move.